Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. First order of business will be to rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Tonight, your invocation will be given by Pastor William Parsons of Redeemer Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost, amen. Heavenly Father, guardian and keeper of your people, watch over those who are entrusted with the administration of Fairhope's government. Make them pure and honest. Keep them from temptation and bribery, from favoritism or prejudice, from indolence or neglect of duty. Create in them earnest, an earnest desire to serve faithfully. Attend their efforts that their work may not suffer from mediocrity. Permit them to experience the joys of noble service completed for a grateful people. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who help to serve. Use every willing service and every effort put forth for good government. Bless the rule of your people here in Fairhope that your will may be accomplished among them. Promote all things for the good of the kingdom of your son, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Pastor Parsons. Council, we have a couple of items tonight, one of which we discussed right at the end of the work session, to be added to the agenda, and that is the funding of the electric superintendent position in grade 28. Also, we didn't get to this, but it should come as no surprise to you. We had the specially called meeting last week, or the emergency meeting, to make emergency repairs to the bulkhead at the Fairhope Municipal Pier due to tropical storm Cindy. You have in your hand there some bid proposals. Actually, we received only one, and if you would like to add a resolution to award that bid, and we have gone through the proper procedures to receive that bid, if you would like to vote on that tonight, which I suggest that we do, we need to make a motion to amend the agenda and add, we can do it in one resolution, to amend the agenda to add the funding of the electric superintendent position and also the fund, the repairs to the bulkhead. Would somebody like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to do that?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we will add as item 23, the funding of the electric superintendent position, and we will add as agenda item 24, the resolution to pay for the repairs to the municipal pier. Anybody else have anything that I may have left out? Okay. Did we vote on that already?
No.
Okay, call that the question. All in favor of amending the budget, amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, agenda is amended. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the minutes of the work session, and the minutes of the June 12 agenda meetings. Do we also need to approve the minutes of the emergency call meeting? Clark, do you have those minutes?
They're not prepared yet.
Okay, so just those three meetings. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Did anybody have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Mayor Wilson is not here tonight, but she has asked for Mr. Harry Satterwhite to give her report, and Mr. Satterwhite, you are free to come to the podium and give your report for Mayor Wilson.
Thank you. The mayor apologizes for not being here. She's in a mayor's conference down in Miami. There's something on the agenda tonight. It's a resolution that she's proposing to hire counsel for the mayor's office here in Fairhope. She contacted me a couple of weeks ago and explained to me concerns she's got about the relationship she has with the council, and it's her perception that it's, there's a lot of tension with the council. There is a lack of cooperation, a lack of communication, a lack of information that she's getting, and of course, I understand the council has its own view and its own opinion of that. So she, she gave me a lot of examples. I don't think I need to argue all the different points that she would make tonight, but she did, and I feel like I've met with most everybody except Commissioner, Council Brown, and we've kind of aired things out, and my recommendation was that Fairhope have a attorney for the mayor's office similar to what Mobile has. Mobile has a state statute where the mayor has the appointing authority of the city attorney, and that city attorney also operates at the pleasure of the mayor. The council has its own attorney, so when there are disputes and the city attorney is placed in the difficult position here of trying to be neutral and not take either side, in Mobile, that doesn't happen. The mayor's office has an attorney. When there's a dispute, the counsel for, the lawyer for the council represents the council. They try to work it out. We contacted Gina Gregory, the council president in Mobile. She says that works well over there because the two lawyers can come together and try to work things out instead of having people, you know, with diametrically opposed positions kind of going at each other. That's what she said, and we've invited you to talk to her. She said she'd be more than willing to discuss that with you. So that seemed like something that would be promising and might work out some of the tension and problems that, that you have. We've also suggested that we conduct a mediation where we come together with a mediator in a non-binding situation. Anybody can walk away at any time, but see if we can all come together to reach an agreement on this or reach a solution to some of the problems that Fairhope's having, and that's also within the resolution that we have such a mediation that I'm there to represent the mayor and that the council come and we try to work, work this whole thing out, come to a resolution, even if it's a written resolution of this. So that's the suggestion that I had. I'm totally open to any other suggestions. We're trying to get to the point where we have a better relationship with the council for the sake of Fairhope and the citizens of Fairhope, and I have an open mind to that, and I'll answer any questions you have or work with you in any way I can to try to help you work this out.
Thank you, Mr. Satterwhite. Was there anybody else that had anything to present on behalf of the mayor tonight during her comment section? Any staff members maybe? Okay, all right, we'll close the report of the mayor and move to public participation. If you have anything that's on the agenda, that would be agenda items five through 24, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I've been very lax in that when people come up and they have things that are not on the agenda, which are reserved for the comments section at the end of the meeting, you will, you do have an opportunity, if you have anything else that's not on the agenda to discuss, to come before the council. So please, if it pertains to the agenda and you'd like to speak to it, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Steve Yule. I live at 6081 Nelson Drive, and I would like to discuss what Mr. Satterwhite just talked about, item number seven. From my perspective as a resident of Fairhope and a taxpayer, the optics of this resolution are, they're not good. To begin with, the city has an attorney who for years has represented both the council and the mayor, and if I read this right, this tells me that perhaps the city attorney is not doing his job well, and I don't believe that. The other piece to this is, and I will be the first to say I don't have all the facts. I go with what I read in the paper and on the Facebook page, which I don't put a lot of credence in, but there is the other piece of this being tied up with some of the pending human resource personnel cases that are forthcoming, and quite frankly, that should have nothing to do with this because under federal and state, and I'm not quite sure how the city of Fairhope handles this, but in discrimination, equal opportunity, and violence against employees, if a senior executive employee, a leader violates those zero tolerance rules, they are considered not to be in the execution of their duty, and under federal law, where I have worked for a long time, not as a lawyer, but as a senior leader, you're personally held liable. So I just see, that's the second perspective I have on this, that why are we doing this? Because this is $15,000, and if we have, and what I heard now, a second legal counsel permanently assigned to the mayor's office, that's not going to be cheap, and as a taxpayer in Fairhope, that's upsetting because I don't think we really need that. And my final piece is, I think a lot of the misunderstanding, and again, I don't have all the facts, is a misunderstanding of what the council does and the power of the council under Alabama law and what the mayor can do, and I'm not throwing, I'm not taking sides here, but I think if both sides sat down and worked that out, we wouldn't have a requirement for Mr. Satterwhite's legal firm to be legal counsel to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yule, is that correct? Yule?
Yes.
My name is Barbara Smith. I live at 157 Willer Lake Drive in Fairhope, and I'm going to make this real quick. The city of Fairhope has a city attorney paid for by the city to take care of city needs. If any citizen of Fairhope wanted or needed an attorney, they would bear that expense. I feel as a taxpayer and concerned citizen that this would and should apply to the mayor also. I feel that if she is not comfortable with the city attorney, that she should bear the expense of her own attorney. Thank you for your time and attention, and this is a great place to live. Keep it that way.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. My name is Billy Wise. I live at 104 Parr Circle here in Fairhope. Relative newcomer to the city, been here only about a year and a half. We moved here because we'd never heard anything bad about Fairhope. We met people on cruises in other towns that said Fairhope is a wonderful place to live. So a year and a half ago, my wife and I escaped Atlanta and came to Fairhope, and what a wonderful place it was. I use the term "was." Since we have been here, we have seen more chaos and disruption in the operation of the city and the relationships between the mayor and the city council than I think we saw in the city of Atlanta, and that's saying a lot. I'm very disappointed as a taxpayer to think that the mayor feels the need to go out and hire her own legal representation. It's not like she's being accused of some terrible crime, that she needs some lawyers' help. This is just a situation where there seems to be very poor communications. I think somebody should grow up and become an adult and communicate with the other people on how to run this fine city and bring us back to that peaceful, wonderful place that I moved to here a year and a half ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Francis Rip, 22985 High Ridge Road. Things aren't like they have been. We're at an impasse. We're not able to get anywhere. Mobile shows that it works. Why not take advantage of using the attorney as a wedge between the two of you to where the two attorneys are talking it out? We got to get somewhere on this. $15,000? It's going to cost you a lot more than that if you go the wrong way on this, and this, this vote right here is going to box you in. You watch and see. Two weeks ago, you paid a bill, $35,000 bill, I think it was, for work on the library. You didn't have an invoice? You didn't have a job description? You had nothing. It was presented to you from the last administration, here, pay this. Oh, well, you know, they said they did it. Let's go ahead and pay it. 35 grand. You go 2,000, you're over $200,000 on the two public lawsuits and the one pending. You spent $3 million on lawsuits on the triangle, and you even had to pay attorneys to argue with attorneys over the attorney fees with the insurance company, and you're talking about $15,000. I think it would be a good move. I'm not saying you got to do it all the time, but I think it'd be a good move to get off not doing anything and trying to get something done and let the attorneys hash it out before you two, before y'all have to get together. I think it will work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rip.
Ron Allen, 6612 Willer Bridge Drive, right outside of city limits of Fairhope. I don't know the answer to this, but my understanding is the mayor's questions are what is her authority and what's the authority of the city council. My question is, would the Attorney General's Office give a ruling on what the powers are, and that should settle the issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
My name is Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street. I just want to say that I think this is a good suggestion by Karen, our mayor, and the council needs to start working together with her. Some of you try, some of you definitely don't, but let's work together and agree to disagree, but then work out the issues. I support Karen's proposal here. I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Any agenda item? Any doubt? I'll close public participation. Thank you for those comments. We'll move on to council comments. Start with Councilman Robinson. Your comments, please.
Yes, I would just like to remind everybody that we have the Fourth of July holiday coming up this weekend, and next weekend, or next week on July the 6th, the Downtown Fairhope Business Association is sponsoring the movie Glow in the Dark, Glow in the Park movie series, and they are showing Lego, the Lego Batman movie, and so that starts at 8:00 next Thursday, July 6th, at Fairhope Commuters Park, or Fairhopers Community Park. I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy July 4th weekend, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilman Conyers?
Just a couple of events I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. The first is the Red, White, and Bike event. That's going to be Saturday, July 1st, at the Coastal Alabama Community College Amphitheater, the Faulkner Amphitheater in Fairhope. That's from 4:00 to 7:00 on Saturday. I believe there's going to be a pie eating contest, maybe some council members involved, but come out and support the exceptional foundation and, and get into the Fourth of July mood. And also, Independence Day celebration on the bluff with the ballroom pops and fireworks, 7:00 July 4th. Can't think of a better, more Norman Rockwell-esque event for, for a town like Fairhope. It's fantastic, and I hope to see y'all out there.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I want to thank the Public Works Department. I've seen them working all week along the beachfront, getting the beach cleaned up for this weekend. I want to thank Lance for his emergency efforts on the bulkhead down at the big pier, trying to get those efforts resolved. Thank you, Dan. I'm hoping the fireworks scare the geese off from down at the pier because it seems they are a nuisance, and I want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July and thank the men and women that protect this great nation. And Mr. Billy Wise, Fairhope will always be a great place to live.
Councilman Boone?
Well, I'm going to speak on the Red, White, and Bike event pie eating contest and challenge everybody here. If you're man enough, step up, boys, to that pie eating contest, because I'm ready. That's all I can tell you. If y'all want to see a good contest, y'all come on out and see us. The second thing is, I would like to commend Lance on this emergency. We stood out there in the rain for a little while, trying to come up with some ideas, and I think he's come up with some real good ideas as far as fixing the wall, and I don't think it's going to be a detriment to the Fourth of July celebrations. I certainly hope to see everyone out there, and because a good time will be had by all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boone. Well, if you've ever seen Councilman Boone eat, you would understand that challenge because he can eat, and I've seen some eaters in my day, but I tell you, Jimmy, he, he'll give you a run for your money in that pie eating, but hopefully we'll get a big turnout for that. I want to thank the council and all the people that participated in a very long work session. We took up an entire hour and a half and going through some matters, and I apologize to Public Works Department for not getting to their budget presentations, but there were some items, I think, the golf expense, the golf budget discussion probably took a little longer than we had planned, but it was certainly time well spent, and also, although we pushed and pushed and pushed on that BCSS contract negotiations without being able to talk too much about numbers, it was, it was badly needed, and we needed to push that along, so thank you for bearing with me. And Public Works, we'll get to you at the, the next work session. As far as the emergency repairs to the bulkhead, I want to also echo the other council members' sentiments that we appreciate the work that you did in trying to shore that up. I was out of town, I missed the emergency meeting, so thank you, council, for taking care of that business, and that I did go down there, or for quite a while today, and I did look at it, and I did not think that, you have something? I got one more thing. Okay, I'll let you go, okay? You want to say it now? Yeah, well. Go ahead.
Since we didn't have the comments of the heads of departments, I was wondering, where do we, Dan, where do we stand on the bidding of the water tank?
But we're okay on time. The big thing was to give the 180-day notice, correct? To get the antennas moved.
We need to bid these deals on Thursday, and then Richard and I focus on what we can do to get it through to the range. So our timeline's still in effect, right?
That's all I need now. Okay, all right, thank you. So back to the, the bulkhead, you know, what was described to me over the, the phone as the, as the failure of the, of the bulkhead when I did get down there, it was not nearly so bad as I thought. It looks like the cap on top of the wall had maybe even rotated slightly. I'd say the total displacement was between a half an inch and an inch maximum there. There was, if you go around there, there's already a gap around that cap. You can look at the compacted dirt, and you can look at grass that's growing between the, the walkway and the cap to see that that's, some of that's not new. It's just been filled in with dirt over the years. But nonetheless, we've got a fix for that tonight, and I appreciate that, but for those that may be picturing the bulkhead falling into the bay, that's, that's just not the case either. With that, I'll close council comments, and we will move to item five on tonight's agenda, which is a resolution that the city council approved the reduction of the amount designated for active boards and increase the amount of a full-time math coach and teacher instead of a two-part-time positions for J. Larry Newton School and amends addendum A as requested. Council, this is in regards to the EAC requested appropriations. I don't believe, I see, oh, Jim, you're here, okay. You want to come up and, Jim, come up, and I will tell you that I spoke to the principal, council, I spoke to the principal, Patrice Kruger of J. Larry Newton. I also spoke to Brad Somersell. I also spoke, spoke to our council liaison, Councilman Brown, our council liaison to the EAC, and everybody was in agreement that this, this was a good thing. Go ahead, Jim, if you would just briefly describe what this entails, and then I will tell you the one, one concern that the council's always had about this and, and the answer that I got that satisfied me on that.
All right. One of the things we've been doing through many years of service in this act area is trying to improve the educational outcomes for our students, and this is J. Larry Newton Elementary School. We know the dollars focused at the early learning area by far have the greatest return down the trajectory of those students going through the system. And when the Acrobat study came out, there were two areas in particular that we had greatest need. One is reading, and the other was math, and so the goal here is we can get a contractual part-time, not part-time, full-time person, where we were trying to get some part-time people, and I think the qualifications of this person would be even better, and the goal here is simply to improve the performance of the students across the board in the school in math.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions, room. Ms. Gell? The, the concern, council, going back several years over this, in funding of a full-time position, was always that we didn't want to be in the employment business and that the funding is not guaranteed year over year, and we didn't want to pull the rug out from under a teacher if they were hired. Ms. Kruger described to me that these are done on a, on a contract of an annual basis, and that they are, this is not a tenured position, and that they do tell them, that they tell them upfront that, that while you may be the coach this year, we may not have this position next year. And that, that's not necessarily just due to it being funded through the city and, and by way of EAC. It's true of any of these positions that, that they hire like this, so that made me feel a lot better because I certainly didn't want to be tied to funding a position from now to eternity, nor did I want to be in the unenviable position of telling a teacher that their position had been cut and that they were out of a job, so I believe that that's all been, all of those concerns have been taken care of, at least in my opinion.
That's correct, and there's tenure law does not apply in this case at all.
Anybody have any questions? Any other questions? Any comments? Thank you, Jim. Thanks, Jim. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution. Make a motion. A motion, two motions in two seconds to pass the resolution to approve this change. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor approving the reduction and increasing the amount for the full-time math coach and teacher. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item number six is a resolution that approves the selection of Stewart Engineering to perform the professional engineering services to upgrade the Fairhope electrical substations and distribution circuitry, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Would anyone like Mr. Peterson or Mr. Ames to come forward and describe this further? Seeing no one, I think we're aware of what this is. I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection. So moved. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the selection of Stewart Engineering. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Janitha?
Thank you.
I didn't even see you there, Richard, I'm sorry. Easiest part of your night, wasn't it? Okay. Item number seven is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Satterwhite and Associates for professional legal services for representation of the office of mayor limited to his work thus far, which started on June 9th, 2017, and participation in a mediation concerning provision of future legal services for the office of mayor, and further authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to sign an engagement letter between the city of Fairhope and Satterwhite and Associates for such purposes, as well as with a mediator to be mutually selected by the mayor and the city council, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit of $15,000. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ames in this regard? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this selection. I'll entertain a motion to approve this election. Seeing no motion, the resolution fails for lack of a motion. Council, does anybody wish to explain themselves?
I'd like to say some things, actually. You know, this is, it's been a sort of an ongoing process for the last couple of weeks. It's been a sort of an ongoing process for the last couple of weeks. The city currently has three firms on payroll that we use for different things. The city's attorney, we have a personnel attorney, and then we have a litigation attorney that we use for lawsuits. So, to me personally, at this time, I don't feel that another... This is coming from a lawyer, so it's hard for me to say this. I don't feel it's a prudent use of taxpayer money to hire yet another law firm. I think there are things we can do to help us move forward, and I think some of the conversations that I've had with Mr. Satterwhite and the mayor over the last couple of weeks, I think obviously the big issue is, and I think you hit the nail on the head, is reaching some agreement on who should be doing what. And so, we had an exchange of some of the issues that I think the mayor has had with us and some of the issues that we've had with the mayor's office. And I think we submit those to the Alabama League of Municipalities or the Attorney General and let them rule on sort of who's stepping over the line and who's not. And I'll be fine with whatever they decide, but I think those are some alternatives we have to this particular issue without spending more taxpayer money on it. You know, and when you... If the mayor had an attorney for her office and the council had an attorney for the council, and there was a disagreement, well, then what happens then? Do we go to court? Do we litigate that issue? It just seems like we're spending more money, good money after bad, because it seems like we're ultimately going to end in some deadlock without some at least part-time resolution, which I think we can get if we ask for it from either the Attorney General's office or the Alabama League of Municipalities. So, in my opinion, that is a better option at this point, and I'd like to see us proceed that way. Obviously, litigation is not good for the city. It's not good for the council. It's not good for the mayor. It's not good for the citizens of Fairhope, so I hope we can avoid that route. And I think there are ways we can do that, and I hope that we'll look into those.
I think Jay covered most of what I would have said. Only other thing, you know, to reiterate, we can certainly seek out the opinion of the League of Municipalities as well as Attorney General. I mean, they're there for that purpose to provide us with some guidance. I think additionally, although I had a meeting with Mr. Satterwhite, with the mayor, with Matt McDonald, with Jay, so I had an opportunity to hash this out and discuss this with them at some length last week, I believe, but right now it's just not something I'm in favor of doing, although I do agree that we need to work on developing our communication and improving that for the sake of the citizens.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I mean, like Jimmy said, communication is paramount in this situation. Also, personal responsibility for actions that each individual is taking is also paramount. Harry, I've got a response to your letter. I'll get it to you tomorrow, and it'll kind of explain why I didn't feel the need to sit down in a meeting.
I've got a little... I mean, we do need to probably do a better job of communicating, but it was communicated to me quite clearly that if we didn't approve this, we'd be sued. And I can assure you, if you want to communicate with this council, coming up with a threat, especially two of them, is not a real wise idea. I'm just going to be very blunt about this. I don't take threats very well, and basically, this is not needed nor warranted. And to communicate in a fashion, if I don't get what I want, I'm going to sue you, is not the way to go about doing business. And I've stated this in every opinion whenever asked. That's all.
I would like to see better communication between the council and the mayor. I also agree with the other four council members that this is not the way. As far as mediation goes, I feel like we are the mediators. I think that the council was elected by the citizens of Fairhope to make decisions on their behalf, and I don't think that we've ever overstepped our bounds. And if somebody wants to make a legal challenge to that, then I'm up for it, because I don't think we ever have. And in fact, anything that would even be slightly construed as being controversial, I believe this council has sought the opinion of council, and not just one council. I respect Mr. Winn. I respect Mr. McDowell. I feel like they've always given us an honest, fair answer, even when they disagreed with us. You probably don't read about it in the paper when they disagree with us, because it's just not newsworthy. It just goes away. So, I believe... I have faith in them, and I'm sorry that the mayor doesn't have as much trust in them as at least I can speak for myself, and I think that the council has. It's unfortunate, but even when we've asked the opinion of the city attorney, the city attorney has also many, many times asked for the opinion of Mr. McDonald, who is one of the newest members of the team that handles some of our litigation. When there's other... When there's further questions, they go to the League of Municipalities, and sometimes that's run through two or three attorneys at the League of Municipalities. Every time, I just don't even know of a time that the council went out and unilaterally tried to make a decision that had anything, that might have any legal challenge at all that we didn't ask for advice. And I think that we've gotten sound advice, and it's unfortunate that it's come to this, but I don't think that it's necessary. There was a comment made earlier that we paid $35,000 for an invoice, for which we never received an invoice. The invoice that we received for those services, we paid, I think, $32,000, not to split hairs there, but I believe the invoice was for $50,000, and we settled it for $32,000. Is that right, Councilman Brown?
Correct.
A little over $50,000?
Around there.
And we had an invoice. Am I correct in that? I believe that I am. Many of the legal fees, most of the legal fees for the triangle litigation, was paid by the insurance company. When they refused to pay those fees, the City of Fairhope sued our own insurance company, and we won, and we were reimbursed those fees. So, the figures that are always spoken, what we paid for that, are always exaggerated. So, that's the true number. And with that, I'll close council comments and hope that the citizens will put their faith in the mayor and the council to do the job that we've been set out to do, but we should... We are the mediators, in my opinion. With that, I'll move to item eight, which is a resolution to reject all bids for equipment for outfitting five police vehicles for the police department. Chief Pettis, would you... Or Dan, or Mr. Ames, would somebody explain why you're recommending rejecting these bids?
Yes, sir. We put it out to bid, and we received very few bids, and we would like the opportunity to put it out again, and I believe there's some modifications to the bid we're going to make. So, I'm not asking you to rebid it, just to reject the bids, and we can bid it out again without asking you to bid it with the modifications that are made.
Okay. Somebody have any questions for Mr. Ames? Okay, would somebody like to entertain a motion to reject all bids? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second to reject all the bids. Any final discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. By doing this, chief, this isn't going to put it back to be detrimental to the police department, is it?
If we can get it out and get the bids back in, and we can go on and get... We called today, and our vehicles probably will be in next month. We don't want to run into the problem we ran into last year with not having this stuff here being paid for, and then it laps over until the next fiscal year. So, right now, we don't see a problem with sending it back out to get this done.
Okay. Good question, Kevin. Okay. Where are we, clerk? We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any questions? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase two dump trucks for the Public Works Department. Their type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama Department of Transportation surplus equipment list, and the total cost is not to exceed $97,400. Somebody like to entertain a motion to purchase these dump trucks?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
$32,000 under budget.
$32,000 under budget. I'm real happy to be asked for that. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item number 10 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope votes to purchase one armored tractor for the Public Works Department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama Department of Transportation surplus equipment list, the total cost not to exceed $72,330, which includes freight. Somebody entertain a motion to purchase this tractor?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Brown, give me some more info.
$65,000 under budget.
$65,000 under budget. Good job, folks. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Item number 11 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope vote to purchase seven computer tablets for the building department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance buying group contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The bid has been nationally bid through NCPA's bid process with a total cost of $12,901. Somebody entertain a motion to make this purchase?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Yeah, bad news for you guys, it's $4,301 over budget. Any questions for Dan? Any questions for the building department on this? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor... Have we got a motion and a second, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item number 12 was a resolution that the City of Fairhope vote to purchase 14 laptop computers for the police department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the TCPN buying group contract, therefore does not have to be allowed out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the TCPN's bid process with a total cost of $14,910. And before you make a motion, I think Chief Pettis wants to address this item.
Yes, I do. Back in 2014, Councilman Burrell, you had asked me that if we ever get over budget or we're coming close to our budget, you would like to be notified so the council could sit down and look at things and see where the problem was, and we could get that worked out. I didn't burn up a bunch of trees. But basically, we get a spreadsheet out about every month to kind of tell us where we're at with our budget, and I have three things highlighted on there, professional services. And in the professional services... Let me get mine. We're $8,000, I think, over budget. And I know that y'all passed a resolution for us to be able to deal with Cyber 360, and they were paid up front. In this one, we use to... When we have to transport bodies to the morgue and back, we have to pay them additional fees. I know that's not what we're talking about here. I had a little concern about that, and so I contacted Cyber 360 to get a up-to-date bid on this, because they're not... When Stephanie talked to them last week, we hadn't spent that $35,000 that they were paid up front for to do. And, you know, only thing I seen was a book and some recommendations. So, I don't really have a heartburn with that right now. My heartburn is with this computer expense. We're $6,159.14 over, and we have something on the budget tonight. So, now I done left my heart and got down in my stomach, and I couldn't sleep Friday night, and I dealt with this thing. I made some phone calls and stuff, and then I went on Munus and looked. We're trying to buy 14 computers here off the buying group, and I see where we used a credit card to buy a computer back in... Let me see. I don't want to say the wrong date. In March, we used American Express to buy a $900-some computer. Now, I have a problem with that, because that other piece of paper I gave you up there, I sent it out to all the supervisors, and I'd asked Lynn... She keeps excellent notes, but she didn't keep notes. She wasn't taking notes. She sent me an email, because I bought this back up again in our monthly, our bi-weekly meetings, that nobody is to buy anything out of my department without me knowing, because it brings us to this point here. And I really have an issue here with this computer, because we're buying 14. That's what we're here for tonight, to look at 14 computers. And here's a computer here. I know I done asked everyone at the police department. I spent the day Friday trying to find this computer, and I've yet to find it. And the problem I got with it is it's bought for the fair police department, and people are around talking and saying that, you know, we ran through this thing about the computers and spyware, what all of this stuff is. Now, if this computer was bought for us and it's registered to the police department and it has police business on it, where's the computer? And so, I don't know if somebody's here tonight that can explain this to us. I would like to get it cleared up, because, you know, I can't see spending another $14,000, and I'm already over budget. And so, I don't know where this money's spent, because nobody is letting me know. It's like the mechanic. And I used this example in the meeting when I said this. I said, "The mechanics, when they have to buy parts for the cars, they let us know, and I okay the PO." So, I'm doing an audit right now, every PO that I done looked to. It's taken a lot of my time that I should be attending to other things to go back and do this audit to see what's going on. And if you see that email, you see who it was sent out to, that nobody's to buy this. And I did. And I think it ought to be some people here that knows I said this in the meeting, because I used the mechanic, for instance, and then Pandora made a motion that she... Well, a statement that, hey, you know, I know I have to call you when I do drug screens to let you know, because I have to okay the PO. But other POs, I mean, people are... I don't know. How can I have control of my budget?
So, let me ask you... So, let me get this straight. Let me ask you the question about the 14 laptops, because I don't have your budget in front of me, and I apologize. I have to... I can't remember every department's budget and every line item. Did you have 14 laptop computers in that budget?
Yes, we had computers in the budget.
Did you have 15 laptop computers in the budget?
I don't have it before me to know exactly how many. See, that's another thing with the budget. When we do our budget, and we've discussed this in the past, when we do our budget, we do everything on there. And I liked it the way we did our budget in the past, was because, to me, it makes things simple. If you say, hey, we're just going to budget this amount for this or this amount for that. But you... Y'all have the budget sheet up there that says... It's just like the telephones, what's the third thing? We budget $2,000 for telephone. And I'm thinking, you know, I don't know if this... We have eight cell phones, and all of them are smartphones. I pay more than $2,000 a year for four cell phones, and one of them is a flip phone. So, in 10 months, I pay more than $2,000. And so, I, you know, I couldn't... But I wouldn't, you know... I talked to Jill about it, and she said that, well, hey, you know, you was underbudgeted on the telephone. But this was something that was moved from general and put into everybody's budget.
Jill's been raising her hand. Come to the podium if you're going to... Jill's raising her hand and wants to say something about this.
The laptops were budgeted. They are budgeted under capital purchases, not computer expense, so it's not going to increase your computer. It is budgeted at $15,000. Now, I don't know how many laptops that was, but they're budgeted under capital purchases. And so, I think chief's concern is that he's already overbudgeted on the computer expense, but this is not going to add to that, because it's going to be in a different line item, and it is budgeted.
Well, and to you, Jill, and to you, chief, my concern is not as much... And I really appreciate your concern, and I do want you to tell us when you're going over budget. My concern is not so much going over the budget. What my concern is, is a computer... Has a computer been purchased with the police department funds? He has no idea who received that computer. So, Jeff, do you have an answer to that? If it was spent with the police department funds, is it used for a police department function?
function?
Three laptops, probably.
Four months ago.
Around four months ago. I had two officers come to my house with crashed hard drives, I had to do something, and I've actually found a really good deal on last year's model. I can only purchase three, that was the limit, so I went ahead and purchased three laptops. Two of those have been put out, one is, I think, in my IT tech's office, waiting to be assigned to a new officer. But I was gonna wait until we got these extra fourteen, and decide where each laptop's gonna go from there. These laptops are about five years old, they're falling apart.
So this is, there's an invoice name from March the eleventh, and I only see enough for one computer, paid for with the credit card. Is this in fact the order?
It's, it was that good a deal, I got three computers for about the price of one.
So, so Chief Pettis, so you had men go to Jeff's house and say they needed a computer, and you didn't approve the purchase, not that maybe you wouldn't have at this price, three hundred and fifteen dollars apiece.
Yeah.
Any other, I mean, does that, does that answer your question, Chief?
Well, yeah, it answers my question, but I'm still back to the point that I need to know, because if the computer comes up missing, and it brings up another question, I understand what you did, Jeff, I understand.
Yeah.
The question that it brings up is this, and the way I look at it, I run the police department, and so I think that basically, I need to know. You know, it is, my officers, I understand they go to Jeff's house, and he's doing the service when he's off, but somebody needs to tell me. I went to all three of my lieutenants, I went to, I went to my, the fellow that handles all of the merchandise and stuff, to make sure to keep, we have to keep the serial numbers and stuff like that, and stuff, who has what. Each officer is assigned everything. And so, if I don't know anything about it, it creates a problem for me down the road. And so, you know, I just need to know.
I hate to say it, but I almost have to say that's kind of for the mayor to, it's kind of her realm or responsibility to make sure that you two are communicating. I don't think the council wants to pass a resolution to tell you two to talk. Y'all might want to pass one to tell us to talk, but we probably don't need to pass that.
I think we got it straight, I think y'all understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, on that credit card purchase, yeah, he wouldn't have been notified of that. I was done on a Saturday, I was in Huntsville. I called the deal on the web, called Deborah, I said, we can't pass this up, they need these laptops. And, I mean, and, but other purchases through purchase order, he gets notification of each purchase order, and he has to approve it. So, you know, he's notified of each purchase that's made. This one just kind of was done through a credit card.
And all three went to the police department.
Oh, yeah. There, well, one is still in our office, two have been put out on the street with officers. And, sorry, I can't recall who those were at this point, but I'll have to go back and look. I do agree with him, he probably, we probably do need a better tracking system, and that's where the new module with our system comes into play with the inventory. I'll be able to track a serial number with a person, but right now, we just have no means of doing that. But we will do a better job of that.
Chief, do you need the fourteen laptops?
Yeah, absolutely, he does need fourteen laptops, he's more than that.
All right. Hey, Chief, you know what, I appreciate your attention to detail, and Jeff, I appreciate your attention to trying to get the best deal for the city as well.
Yeah, I'm trying to look after these officers, I mean, they, yeah, they need good equipment on the street.
Anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
Nope.
Thank both of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ninety dollars under budget.
Okay. Item entertain a resolution to purchase the fourteen laptops for the police department?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Purchase is approved, thank you, counsel. Item number thirteen is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to purchase a John Deere Outfront mower and discharge deck for the Public Works Department, the Streets Department under Public Works, and the equipment is available through direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance buying group contract, therefore we do not have to let it out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process. The total cost is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and twelve cents. Entertain a motion to make this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Somebody let me know how much under budget it is?
Six thousand under.
All right, thank you. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right. Item number fourteen is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to purchase one Kubota zero-turn mower for the rec department. This type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, therefore we do not have to let it out for bid. The total cost is thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Somebody entertain a motion to purchase this mower?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Somebody tell me how much under budget we are?
Four thirty-one.
All right. I don't know if they're just over budgeting to make us happy, but it's working, so. Any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, the resolution passes. Item fifteen is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase and upgrade to the Kronos timekeeping system for the City of Fairhope, and a type of software upgrade needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Somebody like to entertain a motion to upgrade the timekeeping system?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Did we not have something like this recently on the agenda? Was that for the time clocks, maybe, or what was that for? Man, I wish my last name was Kronos, it's crazy. All right. Any further discussion?
Two hundred and twenty-two under budget.
Did you have something on that? Is this for, well, Deborah says it's for annual maintenance, and if we have an annual maintenance agreement, why are we, it says that we have to upgrade the software. Typically, you have that maintenance agreement so that software upgrades are included, so you don't have that expense. So are we not getting the software upgrade with the annual maintenance contract?
No.
I just kind of started this out as a joke, no, I'm serious.
It was a surprise to me as well, but no, their support just supports the software, no, it doesn't include any upgrades.
Man, they got it going on, don't they?
It's a good system.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion and a second already?
Yes, you do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to upgrade the Kronos timekeeping system. This time, we're upgrading the software, not our advice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Like a mental note to have the mayor renegotiate that contract in time. Item sixteen is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to purchase and upgrade to the city's enterprise resource planning software. Type of software upgrade needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, fifty-three cents. This is not a budgeted expense. Can we have someone explain the need for this? And do we have an annual service agreement that we have to buy along with this as well?
Jeff, you just want to get, wants to get you a chair?
You're looking slimmer, Jeff.
Do I physically have to be here? I can speak from back there. I missed any questions.
You're just trying to hog the camera time.
This, the new module, I believe for HR, as applicant tracking software, it just adds on to our HR capabilities.
Has our what software?
Oh, this one. Sorry.
Resource.
Uh, this is, is this the one for twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five, three forty-nine, yes, sir.
This is, okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking of something else. We were stuck with upgrading our utility building software for so long, we missed several upgrades. We are on, say, we're on version ten point five right now. To proceed with our next module, we need to upgrade to eleven dot three, which includes new, needs new software to be able to run that upgrade. We are on a older version of Windows Server, we've got to upgrade to the latest version in order to utilize this upgrade. I hope that that made sense.
Do they have a service agreement that we have to add on to this as well?
This, no, this is a one-time fee. This, this isn't, this isn't from that company.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I'm liking this company better.
Yeah, this is a...
I just didn't know if next week we were gonna have to have a service.
No, I don't know.
Contract with them as well.
This is a one-time fee, and this lasts just until, I mean, this is the latest and greatest of their software, and it'll be five years before we'll probably have to update it. We're on a version of two thousand and eight right now, which is still supported, but it won't be for much longer.
All right, counsel. I entertain a motion to purchase this non-budgeted item?
So moved.
Second.
We're a motion and a second to upgrade the city's enterprise resource planning software. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item seventeen is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a single-phase pad mount transformer for the electric department, two each at one hundred and sixty-seven kilovolt amps, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Entertain a motion to make this?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Peterson, this is not a budgeted, it's not a big expense, but is this part of what's gonna get us through the summer? Routine? Just, okay, just one budgeted, because didn't know you'd need it. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, purchase is approved, thank you, counsel. Item eighteen is a resolution, the city council approves the negotiated pricing for zinc orthophosphate and TKKP chemicals, and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with Thornton, Musso, and Bellman, with an annual cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand dollars. These are materials needed, used, and consumed in the operations of our waterworks system, and authorized for procurement year in the option allowed by Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. Counsel, I entertain a motion to make this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. It is budgeted, but I don't know, it's just one of those kind of sliding scale expenses, Dan, that we vote on every year. I don't see a line for where it was, you know, fifty-one thousand. It was just part of the larger number in there. How are you doing on the budget this year? It's not likely we're gonna vote this down, we gotta have them, but... All right, we have a motion and a second to buy the chemicals needed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item nineteen is a resolution to award a bid for a bulldozer for the public works department. We originally had proposed a used bulldozer, but this is for a new bulldozer with a total bid proposal of one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven for a new twenty-seventeen D-five cap bulldozer. And if I say so myself, Mr. Brown, at the budget time, when I believe you had, and I had discussed reducing that by about a hundred and fifty-five or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we were hoping to find something that was even used, that they could use. This is eighteen hundred dollars over that budgeted amount for a brand-new twenty-seventeen D-five, so another successful budgeted item should lead to purchase this. I entertain a motion for its purchase?
So moved.
Second.
We're a motion and a second to purchase the bulldozer. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Item twenty is a resolution to award bid for the fitness equipment for the rec center to Johnson Health Tech North America with a total bid proposal of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Entertain a motion to award this bid?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Cool is gone. My question for him was, is it so much under budget? Did we get everything that they were hoping to get, as far as equipment goes, in this, in this purchase? Does anybody know? Deborah, do you know? Dan, do you know?
Yes.
That was everything that they had hoped to get when they put their budget together?
That was everything they itemized out to buy that, and they don't write copy of it.
Very good.
With that equipment, it, we have, it has been a long time since we made a purchase like this, and of that type of equipment. So, that's not to say that something may not go out tomorrow that we have to get, just understand this is, this is excellent and good, that it has been that long since we have procured, and now they're, they're buying fairly efficiently on this.
Very good. Good job. Okay, we have a motion and a second to purchase the fitness equipment. Any final comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The resolution passes. Item twenty-one is a resolution that the budget for the FY two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen is hereby amended by funding a warehouse supply clerk, grade nineteen, to be filled and trained prior to the retirement of the employee in that full-time position. This was to alleviate the mayor and staff's concerns over us having no provisions to actually bring people on and train them prior to their departure. So this would go a long way, and this is just maybe one of future examples to come on this, so. Entertain a motion to budget this position?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item twenty-two is a reappointment to the rec board. Reappointment to the class of two thousand and sixteen, whose term ended April two thousand and seventeen, the new term shall end April two thousand and twenty-one. The nominee is Mr. Bob Keizer. I'll entertain a motion for the reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Two motions again, two seconds for the reappointment. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, item twenty-three, and I'll read this, is where is the city council adopting April twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, a resolution approving and adopting proposed budget for FY two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, resolution number twenty-seven, twenty-seven dash seventeen, sounds like a Boeing jet. Whereas the City of Fairhope is desirous to amend the budget by funding the electric superintendent position, grade twenty-eight, be it resolved by the governing body, the City of Fairhope, that the budget for FY two thousand and sixteen, twenty-seven times seen is hereby amended by funding the electric superintendent position, grade twenty-eight. I'll entertain a motion, this resolution, pass this resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have any further discussion? Okay, I'd like to say, before we pass this, Mr. Peterson, I know that you and I, we've got to sit down for about fifteen, twenty minutes this week, and talk about the funding of these positions, and we have a solution, and let's just knock that out real quick. You and I, maybe Jill, or whoever else we need to sit down with, if you don't mind. All right. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel, and congratulations is in order to, will be the new, I believe, I believe the mayor intends to make a promotion of a gentleman in this room, so thank you. Item number twenty-four is a resolution that we added to the agenda, and this is concerning the repairs to the pier in Bulkhead. The City of Fairhope did request receive open bids for emergency repairs to the Bulkhead Municipal Pier due to tropical storm Cindy for the Public Works Department. Bid number O twenty-two dash seventeen at five-five-five South Section Street in the City of Fairhope. At the appointed time and place, the following bids are opened and tabulated as follows. And if you look there, the bid tabulation shows that we did receive one responsible bid from Doug... bid from Doug Ward and Company in the amount of $19,200. Says after evaluating the bid proposals with the required bid specifications, Doug Ward Company, Doug Ward and Company LLC with a total bid proposal of $19,200 has now awarded the bid for emergency repairs to Bulkhead at Municipal Pier due to tropical storm Cindy for the Public Works Department and authorized council president to execute the contract. Now, that last statement is to authorize me to execute the contract is so that we can get that taken care of. This should not come as a surprise to anybody, but we wanna get that contract signed tonight so they can start work tomorrow so that our citizens and guests can enjoy that area July the 4th. So I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Once again, kudos to Public Works and all those involved, and Dan, you know, a good price on this as far as I can tell as well, so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Next item is public participation, limited to three minutes maximum unless engaged by a council member. Please come forward to the podium if you have anything else to bring forth before the council and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. TJ Murphy, 204 Tensaw Avenue. At the, I guess last week, actually, I sent the mayor an email asking if she could use tonight's council meeting to give the community an update on where she is, was putting together a team to implement the comprehensive plan. Didn't realize she was still in Miami. So just as a matter of public record, I just wanted to, to let her know that hopefully she'll be prepared to be able to do that at the next meeting. And I also like to let the council know that, that the issue of growth is still an issue that is very much on the minds of the people in this community, and we're looking for the mayor and the council to take an accelerated and aggressive approach to try to bring this in control. And look, the comprehensive plan may not be the insolution, but it seems to be the best thing that we have right now, so the community is looking for, for you folks to kinda take a leadership role in, in making this thing happen and come up with a better solution for the long-term benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Counsel, to that end, he brings up a thought that I've had recently is that, and to staff too, Wayne, and let's not wait until the last minute to see your recommendations. If you have things you can filter to us, let us start reviewing them so that we don't have a bruhaha come time to adopt all these things. And also, council, we are perfectly within our right to come up with other ideas that we may have and pass on to Wayne. If you have ideas for, whether it be the comprehensive plan, whether it be changes in what you would like to see in our ordinances as it applies to planning and zoning, our managing growth, you know, Councilman Brown, we spoke during the election time about managing growth, and we haven't even had the opportunity to have that discussion again.
Right.
And we had things that, that we were talking about that we, we haven't discussed since. We need to start doing that.
And I'll touch on what TJ asked. Wayne and Sherri Lee have set up a meeting July 12th.
Oh, yeah, good point.
You know, to address the ordinances and it's, community professionals, you know, design, architect, landscape architect, engineers, people that have submitted plans over the last year, two years, that might be able to help in streamlining the process. I don't think that necessarily addresses a comprehensive plan per se, but it does address the ordinance issue. A comprehensive plan, you know, that's a pretty big conversation, you know, whether is it a good one or not, it doesn't matter, 'cause we can't enforce it, it's outside our city limits, but certainly a discussion worth having.
If I could add too, we, we will bring those, as we get those, the, the ordinances, some of those are, ordinances we're gonna be amending are, are not terribly controversial, I don't believe, but so we'll, we'll definitely bring those forward as we get those ready to go. I've got a stack of them now that I'll likely bring to the next work session for you to look at.
You can put them in our boxes so that we can start, you know, looking at them in our, in all of our spare time that we have too, so.
And, you know, one of the things we're looking at, also some of the procedural issues we have in the ordinance, we talked about community meetings and things like that, so you'll see that. We, we've talked about revising the site plan process, and so you'll, so that's, that's ready to go. Downtown issues, you know, one of the things about, about the zoning ordinance and the subregs, they're very, very important documents, and anytime you're dealing with property rights, people's property, you know, we wanna take that, I mean, I know from my perspective, I wanna be very, very careful that what we do is well-thought-out, well-planned. I've seen a lot of things go awry when you have unintended consequences, so we're trying to consider all those issues that may arise from any change, make sure we're trying to cover all our bases. The comprehensive plans, that's a good topic, and we went through an update, I believe, last year or two years ago, changing the comprehensive plan, that's a much more, longer-term process that, you know, requires more time and more consideration. My main focus now is the zoning ordinance, and again, one of the things, working with Richard on some of the specs and standards, for example, for sewer and water and things like that, that's a big, a big topic we're, we're looking at. But, but we'll definitely bring those forward to you, put them in your box. We've got a stack of things that we've been working with that, that we've been given, I've been given some ideas to, to follow up on. Obviously, if there's concerns that you have as a council, I would love to hear those and try to address those as best I can, but please let me know, email me or call me. I'd be glad to put something together. I've done a lot of amendments, zoning ordinance to the years, and, and so I've got a lot of experience from different places, I've seen it handled different ways, and so hopefully we could come up with a good solution to whatever problem you guys see that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Public participation still open? Seeing though, and I will now close public participation, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment?
Hold on, Jack.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't know you wanted to participate.
Well, we forgot to thank the police and the fire department for all the work they